Good evening. The time is now 6:45. I'd like to call this pension board meeting to order for January 13. Can you do roll call?
All right, Gaggen.
Kevin Cunningham?
Peggy Borie.
And I did hear from one of the members who was ill, so Dean might not be here tonight. I did not hear from Kristi. Is anybody here for public comment? Hearing none. Item D, we would entertain a motion to approve the minutes for the pension board meeting dated 12/9/24 unless there's any items to fix.
I only saw one correction on the new business item one. It says Peggy Dean seconded. So just remove Dean.
Okay.
That correction I think motion accepted. Minutes for 12/9/24.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. We do not have old business under new business. There are five items. So go to item number one. We had an officer who had just resigned, so we would have to have a motion to reverse Heather Wright, what she had put into the pension, which is $20,054.73 as she resigned as of January 6.
I made a motion to approve the pension reimbursement in the amount of $20,054.73 starting January 6, 2025.
Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Second one on the list is for when Catherine Taylor had passed, there was, we went through a process of making sure that we resolve an issue that would allow this house to continue on with payments. So in this time, we're looking to see if we can do a continued reimbursement of 50%, which is $910.56 to Raymond Taylor effective immediately.
Do we open that? Would we open it like a, no, just currently go forward?
Yep.
And does that tell the pension about that?
Like any other pension until...
The budget for that pension.
The motion...
That's my intent, please.
Correct.
I make a motion to approve the pension distribution for Raymond Taylor in the amount of $910.56 per month.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Third person is looking for a distribution. This is for Bradley Cullen, Bradley member, working with the Board of Education for almost 25 years. Bradley's looking for a monthly disbursement starting May of 2025 for the amount of $1,253.50.
I have a motion to approve the pension distribution for Bradley Cullen in the amount of $1,253.50 per month, starting May 1, 2025.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Next one up is Deb Augen, a paraprofessional. So Deb is looking to retire with a monthly disbursement of $681.17. Deb was with us for 27 years.
I'll make a motion that we approve Deborah Augen's monthly pension of $681.17 starting February 1, 2025.
I'll second that.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Can you stop your...
Sure.
Heather Wright, no? Raymond Taylor. Did I say a date?
It was starting immediately.
Okay. Here's this. Mine's the number one.
That was because of Kathy's retirement at that time.
Oh, I got you.
We do have one more. That is for Joy Poproin, who was with the school system as a paraprofessional for 15, little over 15 years. She's looking for a payout dispersion of $387.72 a month, starting February 1.
Make a motion to approve the pension distribution for Joy Poproin in the amount of $387.72 per month, starting February 25.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And there is no other new business. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're now adjourned at 6:45. Good evening. The time is now 7:00 PM. I'd like to ask that the Town of Plainfield Board of Selectment meeting come to order for January 13, 2025. If you would, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, to the sacred earth, to the republic, to the stand, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you hear me? Roll call.
All right, Gaggen.
Kevin Cunningham?
Peggy Borie.
Next item is item C, to approve meeting minutes for the Board of Selectment meeting from 12/23/24.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for 12/23/24.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item D, which is public comment. Does anybody here wish to speak and address the Board of Select at this time? If so, there's a microphone right up here. Make sure that you please give your name, so the recording secretary can add that into the minutes. Just as a reminder, we are discussing for public comments the things that are on this agenda. So, that's it.
Time limit. What's your time limit?
Oh, we'll get to that in a minute, but if you wouldn't mind just holding just like three minutes, that would be great.
All right, understood. My name's Trav Harmon. I'm from Musup, Connecticut. As it pleases the Board of Selectmen, I'm here to challenge the constitutionality of Plainfield's proposed ordinance 143. The ordinance mandates licensing for hawking, peddling, soliciting, and vending, and imposes penalties for noncompliance violating constitutional rights protected by the First, Fourth, Fifth Amendments, as well as federal and Connecticut state law. The First Amendment violations in Thayer versus City of Worcester, 2015, the Supreme Court vacated ordinances restricting solicitation, finding them unconstitutional. Restrictions on free speech. Ordinance 143 broads, restriction resemble those invalidated in Thayer. Watchtower Bible and Track Society versus the Village of Scranton, 2002, the Supreme Court ruled that requiring a permit for door-to-door advocacy unconstitutionally burdens free speech. Ordinance 143 mirrors this by banning licenses without exemption for non-commercial or religious speech. In Schumark versus Citizens for a Better Environment, 1980, the court struck down broad licensing for charitable solicitation, a flaw present in ordinance 143. Martin versus City of Struthers, 1943, the court invalidated bans on door-to-door handbill distribution, emphasizing the importance of such communication. Ordinance 143 similarly restricts advocacy and religious expression. Fourth and Fifth Amendment violations. Cantwell versus Connecticut, 1940, the court struck down discretionary licensing that allowed offices, officials, to approve or deny religious solicitation. Ordinance 143 gives similar unchecked authority to the chief of police violating due process. Preemption by federal state law. The Telephone Consumer Protection Act, 47 U.S.C., subsection 227, preempts local regulations on telecommunications. Plainfield lacks authority to regulate telephone solicitation beyond federal and state law permits. Connecticut's Chapter 743M governs the solicitation and telemarketing. Ordinance 143 imposes conflicting licensing requirements and penalties, overstepping local authority. Connecticut general statutes 21-37 enacted in 1949 has not been updated to reflect modern legal standards and societal changes. The outdated framework creates potential legal conflicts, especially when applied to evolving communication methods. Similarly, a recent incident involving a planning and zoning board appeals candidate highlighted how antiquated election laws, originally designed for mechanical voting machines rather than paper ballots, prevented timely replacement of a deceased candidate. This outdated system hindered electoral fairness and demonstrates how obsolete laws can obstruct modern governance. Plainfield's ordinance 143 is overbroad, vague, and unconstitutional. It unlawfully restrains speech, grants excessive discretionary power, and conflicts with federal state laws. Additionally, Connecticut's outdated statutes like 21-37 risk further conflicts when applied without modern revision. I respectfully repeat the proposed ordinance. I have all the case laws organized by date, if you'd like to read them. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Anybody else? Wish to speak?
Smith, Eric, Musup, Highland Street. I do want to do one thing, just publicly acknowledge the efficiency of Ron Maravina's team in the Highway Department. There was a lot of efficiency and just really great service for an issue that I have with my street. So I just want to say thank you for that. I'm glad that you're discussing the public comment section on today's agenda. I don't know what you're going to be discussing, but I hope that it adds to the dialogue that we can have, whether it be dialogue or just public comment, in terms of getting documentation and maybe a little bit more description on the agenda so that I can come here and I can say, oh, this is what you want to discuss about public comment. Here are my feelings on that, rather than having to, rather than having an action made without public comment that directly impacts the agenda item. And then lastly, you heard what Trav said, which I think he said way more eloquently than I did, but I, if you do continue with the draft, and I know I have the first draft, because I put in a Freedom Information Act request for the first draft, you will be reviewing a second draft, I'm assuming. And so I know that it's going to be different, but I want to point out a couple of things that I would love changed if you continue on with this, which I know you don't. The application process includes information that raises the risk of bias, like a physical descriptor. I'm assuming that means that, so that you can tell who the license is for, but that can be collected after the application. This brings up points about race discrimination, as well as age discrimination and other things. Excessive oversight and relocation power, Section 9, grants a single person the authority to revoke broad subjective criteria. I don't believe that our current police chief would be an issue, but you never know, and what if we replace him with someone less scrupulous? Less scrupulous? Or even worse, whatever, anyway. There are several First Amendment issues. And then lastly, Connecticut law, as Trav stated, protects the rights of political parties and individuals to engage in a free and fair campaign. This ordinance essentially makes it not possible for, in Plainfield, given that a license would be needed to canvas, and be able to meet people without having a platform, like being the incumbent, like you are. Even if we were to look at those who can afford the $200, that's 20% of the budget that the candidate is allowed to put into their budget. So, and it costs about $10,000 to send a single piece of mail to every house in Plainfield. So unless you're backed by a major party who's going to be giving you money for your campaign, or are the incumbent, this is going to be another barrier to entry for elected local positions. We'd want more voices that are less represented here. We don't want more of the same. Please note that I believe as a private resident, which I'm allowed to do, it is odd that on a reelection year, just this November...
Excuse me, Samantha?
Yeah?
You have the three minutes.
Are you...
Thank you, Heather. I'll take Heather's three minutes. Thank you.
That's not how it is works. He has three minutes to speak. Other people have three minutes as well.
Please note, the democratic process in this town is already hard to break into without being backed by a majority party or a major party. This disparate impact on smart, capable candidates cannot be ignored and should be considered before it ever reaches the table. It's really interesting that Trav went to three minutes and 30 seconds and you didn't stop him, but we will, we will continue on. Thank you.
Didn't you give up your minutes to her?
But I only took 20 seconds.
I'm just saying that this could go on all night long with people tag teaming. I just want to make sure we have three minutes.
Well, we have, we have a bunch of people here, so they can absolutely get their minutes.
You're not running the meeting. Okay? I will allow you two minutes and 30 seconds if you have that time to go.
I don't need that long. Having Smith, Plainfield, I don't have to be prepared. I was just coming here to request an explanation or maybe some information as to why agenda items...
Agenda item 3 was put on the agenda for discussion, to sell the tower, when the residents of Plainfield have already provided their feedback on whether they're going to perform or not. So that's out.
Anybody speak at this time?
Gariselle, there's a follow-up on that. That's the set of town meetings, correct? Even though the Board of Finance hasn't approved it yet, because that's on our agenda for Wednesday.
We'll speak about that when we get to it.
Now, the sale of the tower, the 660, is that going to be a lump sum to us?
We'll get to that when we get to the item on the agenda.
Answer it. No, it's easy.
Not going to take that for more. We're just going to get to it. When we get to it, I'll leave you to it.
And she wrote the public, got guidelines on public comment. All right. Thank you.
Jenny, Mrs. Kevich, 265, Jenny Groh. I noticed on the agenda that you will be acting, discussing and acting on guidelines for public comment. And so that, to me, means that you will make a decision that will become permanent. And so I just ask that the select people consider a couple of things. Is this something that's specific just to your selectmen meetings? Or is this going to be a broad stroke for all boards and commissions of the town? Because I myself chair two commissions, and it feels restrictive when people in the public come out to make comments that, you know, we can afford them that time. So will we as chairs be liable if we go over these said guidelines? So I strongly encourage you to have a discussion tonight, but seriously ask you to hold off on having an action item take place until the town people can hear about what data would be required to apply by. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
Can I just get to you? Hi, my name is Heather. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
My name is Heather Brison. I reside in 19 Palmer Ford in Central Village, and I just wanted to inquire about the cell tower that said it was going to be sold for $660,000. I was just curious as to why that property wasn't considered for open space or conservation? Or also like what that money could go to for the town? And why is it being sold and not considered as a cap within the town for public use?
Okay, we can get to that when we talk about it.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Before Gary gets back up, is anybody else that wishes to speak first?
Gariselle, Musup, I think in regards to the public comment, I think that would be guided by the bylaws of each commission, not by, not by the town.
Thank you. With that, before we jump into new business, there's one other item I wanted to add. I think I gave the selectmen an opportunity to read through the information, but I wanted to add to the meeting tonight, another item for the agenda. The Town of Plainfield received an email last Thursday, it was almost 1:00 in the afternoon, inviting all municipalities to apply for STEEP grants. I'm asking that you add the item to the agenda for discussion and possible action. If you so choose to motion the item, please do so as discussed and approved resolution opting the town into a small town economic assistance program, which is STEEP, and authorize the town to submit an application before February 20th, 2025 deadline. There's a lot more information that goes in there. I hope you've had a chance to read through it. So at this time, I would just entertain a motion to add that to the agenda for discussion.
So move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item number seven. Will be added as discussed and approved resolution opting into STEEP and authorizing the town to submit an application for February 20th, before the February 20th deadline. Let me go through item number... One on the agenda, which is for new business. Consider an act on the tax refunds as requested by the tax collector, total in $43.43.93. There's a list here for a-car leasing for $458.65, a-car leasing for $768.14, a-car leasing $176.82, a-car leasing $299.27, a-car leasing $294.57, David P. DeJardins, $227.60, a-car leasing $706.72, a-car leasing $259.73, a-car leasing $352.23, Toyota Lease Trust, $235.91, Toyota Lease Trust, $70.41, Toyota Lease Trust, $471.23, and Dennis R. Corrente, $22.65. Total should be $43.43.93.
Make a motion to approve the tax refunds in the amount of $43.43.93.
I'll second it.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor say aye. Item two on the agenda says, "Discuss an act on town charter, Section 79A1", which is Open Space Advisory Committee. It was brought to our attention, and we have been monitoring, but it's brought to our attention that we do have some people who have not been attended, as these are, these boards and committees are occasionally not attended by people. We do get this notification. There are two people for Open Space who have not been to meetings for quite some time, and it's been noted, it is our job to then be able to utilize the town charter to remove them from the committee so we can try to find other people that might want to serve. So at this time, I would just ask if you would consider removing both Caesar Rios and John Meyer from the committee?
Make a motion to remove Caesar Rios and John Meyer from the Open Space Committee.
I'll second it.
Any other discussion?
Yes. Are they going to be replaced?
We'll kind of search for people who'd like to come in.
I didn't know if Open Space was...
It's pretty far along, but it doesn't hurt to have other people involved in it.
How many members do we have?
Right now, there's...
May I speak?
Yes, yes.
As Chair of the Open Space Advisory Committee, for those who don't know, we are 10, can be a 10-member board. We currently have seven, and we have three people who regularly show up, and so we can walk in non-horum challenges. So we have an ID.
Thank you, because that was my next question.
You have seven with these two.
Seven with those two.
So you'd be down to five.
You'd be down to five. And five, and that allows forum and people to be absolutely the top volunteers. If anybody in this room has interest in sitting on the commission, that would be a great committee.
Okay. Thank you for the information. We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Item three, discuss an act on setting a town meeting date for sale of town home, cell tower land located 4557 Unity Drive, Tower Point, or 660. Let's see if I can review that with you. We did have that on a agenda item, but the agenda item included with earmarking the money is going towards Lyons Park. After that meeting, and it was voted down for a town meeting, I did speak with a lot of the residents who were here that night. I spoke to a lot of residents that follow up week and since then. Their main intent is, it wasn't so much the sale of the Tower Point, excuse me, $660, it was the intention of earmarking the money to put Lyons Park. So that's why it's going to, I'd like to bring it back, because Tower Point would still like to purchase, say, the cell tower. I think a question was asked about making it open space. It cannot be made open space where it is, so that cannot happen. So that is where we're looking to do, is just to bring it to a town meeting. If we bring it to, if we didn't have this on the agenda for tonight, we couldn't have brought it up to the Board of Finance.
That's what I was just going to ask.
Yeah, we couldn't have brought that up to the Board of Finance, so it has to go through that process. I hypothetically would say, if it didn't pass tonight, then we'd stop right there. So then we'd go to the Board of Finance, and again, the same thing. We have to present it to the Board of Finance. If they so desire to allow the public to have input and vote at the town meeting, they can do so.
Look at selling the cell tower period, so...
Is there a reason why?
Yeah, I don't think we should be selling town assets that we get income from.
Okay. We're talking about a monthly, I mean yearly fund coming in versus putting something away in our fund balance.
So just to be broad about this, we're looking at selling the cell tower. You're looking at selling ECC.
Can we talk about one thing though?
Okay, well, I'm, we brought it up.
Yeah.
I'm just worried that we keep selling up town assets. Selling the cell tower that we get income from, we should be taking in income, not selling it off for a one-time fee of $660,000.
Okay.
We get one time, one shot at that apple for $660,000.
And we've heard in the past, you put the money into the fund balance, so it would earn greater interest versus only $32,000 of earning interest.
But that would be, we would have that income for a while, not just, not just for this one time. You would have that income going forward.
We would have this $32,000 income annually.
And have we looked at increasing the cell tower fees?
You can't do that. That is up to the owner of the cell tower itself.
Okay, we looked at increasing it.
We've already talked to them about that. There's not going to be making any larger changes to it.
Can we look at charging in one for that company?
I just told you, we've already talked to that company. We're not going to get a large increase.
What kind of contract do we have with them?
It's due up at the end of '26.
So we could renegotiate that contract.
You're not, I've already, I've already explained it to you. We have spoken to them. They are not going to be using...
I'm not worried about them increasing anything while they're, that's their problem. I'm talking about what the town has at the town and negotiating a better contract.
I think I've said it three times. We've already discussed it with them.
They can take rent off. They're not going to, they're not going to take that.
Or we can do feasibility, or we can give it to someone else. Look at another company that could be interested.
Can I ask you a question a little bit? On October 28th, you made a motion...
Mm-hmm, to bring it to a town meeting.
To send the sale of the tower to the Board of Finance.
But it's already been there once.
But you made the motion.
Right, but it's already been there once in the town, because I thought the town should speak. The town has spoken. My personal opinion...
Then you should still be for putting it forward to the town.
I don't believe, I thought a lot about it, and I don't believe we should be selling town assets. A lot has come up since then. A lot of things we're selling since then, and I changed my position.
Thank you. Any other comment on this?
Yes, we're just setting a town meeting. It's already going to the Board of Finance, right?
It will be going to the Board of Finance.
Pending the sale. I mean, pending the outcome of the Board of Finance.
Personally, I would like to see the public be able to have input on what they're going to do. The earmark is not going to go towards Lyons Park. So I would say that let the public talk about this at a town meeting and allow the public to actually talk about it in the town before we have to...
My thought seriously is that cell phone towers aren't going to be used in what's going on with Starling, things like that. It's going to come off, so we're going to be stuck with it.
We don't know what's going to happen in 20 years.
You don't?
I mean, there's some stuff that we would never have imagined right now that could be, that happens now. We don't know what's going to be 20 years from now. We can't forecast out 20 years from now. All we can do is the best we can with what we're right now.
Yep. That's my point.
Yeah, exactly.
So does she have a date of arrival?
It'll be the January 30th for a town meeting.
So I'll make a motion pending the outcome of forced finance to send this item to town meeting for 30, January 25, Town Hall, 7:00.
I'll second that.
Is that ready to say, 7:00?
Any other discussion? Everyone in all the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item four, discuss an act on public guidelines for public comment. So I just put something together saying that the Board of Selectmen in the town of Plainfield wish to promote public input on issues related to agenda items on the current board meeting. In order to do so and to be able to proceed in the business of the board, we're asking that speakers provide their names for the record and understand that there will be a lot in three minutes to speak in the public comment section of the meeting, once per meeting. Now, I did get some of this data from other towns. I also reviewed other boards and committees that serve in the town of Plainfield, and that's where I drafted this from.
It's those things, language doesn't apply with...
That's why I just put it in there with you, but basically, this is the first page.
Do you want to read this for the public, so we know what we're talking about?
What do you mean?
Well, they have no idea what we're talking about.
You want to read it, too?
Sure.
Says "public comment." Remember, this is an opportunity for membership, members of the public, to inform the governing body about their views. The meetings itself belong to the governing body. The public does not participate in the decision-making. Instead, it provides input to the governing body, which states that the input into the consideration in the making of its decisions. Time considerations. Establish specific periods for the public comment during your meetings in a way that is consistent with your community's expectations and customs. Setting length of time by which each period will conclude, unless the council wants to extend it. Setting time limit for each individual to speak. Speakers may not be given their time to other people. Written guidelines. Provide printed copies of the guidelines and expectations. Review the guidelines at the beginning of each comment period if necessary, and explain that this is the time for the citizens and the residents to express their views in order to inform the council. Explain that the council will not engage in dialogue with the public during this time. The council has the right to set limits on what subjects may be addressed, how long public comment will be, how many times people may speak. All such limits must be viewpoint neutral. They must not favor one point of view or another. During public comment, require all speakers to address three remarks to the chair. Require all speakers to adhere to the time limit the chair, the chair should. Thank each speaker, whether positive or negative. In general, it is the best, it is best not to respond to all public comment. However, the chair may provide brief factual information if appropriate. The chair must not, under any circumstance, enter into a back and forth exchange with the public. Council members refrain from speaking during this portion of the meeting. Have staff ready to note input or questions from the public and to provide responses at a later date. Behavioral expectations. Model courtesy, respect, and encourage members of the public to do the same. The public has the right to make critical and harsh remarks. Members of the public do not have the right to disrupt the meeting. The council may prohibit demonstrations moving ECC placards. That's what's been proposed. Is there, is there a reason that we're bringing this up?
I think that it's time that we actually do something about public comment. I think if we went through, the Board of Finance has their annual meeting, and sometimes the speakers in the annual meeting go 10, 15 minutes. I think that's inappropriate. I think it would be good to set a guideline for all boards and committees. They have their own, some have their own. They can do it any way they wish, but I think for us, I think this is a good way to use. No, it's a limitation of three minutes. It gives everybody enough to use the speaker.
Three minutes, nine.
Yeah, it is.
Oh, yeah.
Something we can also modify in the future if we find the need to add more to it, but I think it's something that we can start with.
Don't we already go like Robert's rule?
Again, you want to be able to explain to the public what is going on, so I think this is a good way to do that.
So the only thing I think we're seeing is, is that the speaker should not have give and take of orders.
Because that wasn't that followed.
Well, it does say you can't give orders, but don't, don't the bylaws of the town proceed this, and isn't it in the...
The bylaws of the town?
Bylaws of each, the written, the things that each commission has.
And they have their own?
Yes. Does that, does that, does this take precedent over theirs?
This is not for that.
This is not for us.
This is just for the, okay, it's just for the...
Would you entertain a continuation of this or modification?
That's the only modification I would need.
So we would take, we would make this, being an apple, sorry.
No communication between the speaker and the audience. Just the speaker, it says that, but still.
Chair must not, under any circumstances, enter into a back and forth exchange with public.
I'm talking about, I'm sorry.
But I'm saying, if you wanted to add that line.
No.
No?
No, the speaker should not have back and forth with the public. Because they just, I mean, Gary, they asked Jenny something, and it's best not to present to us. Sometimes the back and forth with the audience.
People come out here to be heard. They come out here, I mean, unless they're being disruptive. People, these people came out here to speak to their elected officials, all right, and unless they're being really disruptive, which is another matter unto itself, I think they should be able to speak. Yes, I think there should be guidelines, but I think it's a, it's a normal conversation. I know there are meeting rules, and there's Robert's Rules of Order, and there's different things like that, but if someone takes, we always have a problem getting people to come to this meeting. When people come, have a problem coming anyways. I mean, these chairs are usually empty. And if we start putting all these restrictions and these rules and regulations on people, which again, most, most commissions and boards go by Robert's Rules of Order. It's a standard thing. If we start putting all these different rules and restrictions and don't allow them to come, feel, feel comfortable coming to speak to, to their public officials, I, I think, I don't think this is the right. I don't think, I don't think it's very needed, and that's what I'm saying.
So what would you say? They come to the microphone and speak as long as they want?
No, no, we, there are...
We're trying to set some guidelines. I thought tonight was all right.
Don't we, don't we already have guidelines?
No.
We don't have any guidelines as a Board of, as a Board of Selectmen? None, ever.
I don't think he would, he wouldn't be coming out here.
No, I'm just asking. I mean...
It just came up.
I've, I've never heard of a commission not having such...
That's why I'm trying to, sorry, stop.
I say we should table it until the public gets a chance to look at this. And how, do they, have they seen this?
Would you like the public, I'm just asking, would the public is going to have any input into our rules and regulations?
No, I just think that they should be able to see what we're proposing, rather than having me read it off 10 seconds before we decide on it.
Because it's our board, right?
I agree, but it's also the people's board. The people have, the people have, have elected us as, as their official...
I don't think we're going out of bounds on what we're asking for. Read it on.
I say we take a look.
You say that we go, you know, sentence by sentence, we're trying to promote the public input on issues related to the agenda items. Is that fair?
Yes.
At our current board meeting. So in order to do so, we're trying to make so that we're asking for speakers to see their names, because we have to have that for the recording secretary. So that's understood. And then after that is just for the record, and then to understand that there's a lot in three minutes. Because we have business to do.
Oh, yeah. And that, that was all that was in here, but you're, you're, you're making statements like, the meeting itself belongs to the governing body.
Okay, what I'm asking for is just the front page.
Oh, you're not asking for the back?
Those are just guidelines, so that you know about...
I just told you, I'm sorry, I'm trying to explain, these are the guidelines from what we came from, what I found.
Okay.
That's all.
We're just asking for the front page.
That's it.
And the, okay. You're, you're asking for the Board of Selectmen in the town of Plainfield wish to promote public input on issues related to the agenda items on the current board meeting. In order to do so and be able to proceed with the business of the board, we are asking that speakers provide their names for the record and understand that there will be an allotment of three minutes to speak in the public comment section of the meetings once. That's all you're asking for.
Well, there was one other suggestion, and Art, your suggestion was?
No back and forth between the speaker and the public. That can get out of here. I've seen it in meetings.
Well, it can, but that's when the, the chair can...
Well, you shouldn't have to. You should make guidelines, so it doesn't have to. That's all.
I'll make a motion that we, we act on what I just read.
Without adding?
Without adding anything.
Speaker, no, should not have back and forth?
Yes, without that. But I do agree with you on that. But I, I don't think that is...
Second? There are no second motions, fails? Okay, the other thing I want to make sure was very clear was to, to the public is that when they go to the microphone to talk about things, that they don't have a back and forth dialogue with the speaker. So that way, they understand that. We will definitely get to the comments that were made during the timeframe of the meeting, but it's just that if you start that dialogue now, going back and forth, you have a debate. We don't have a debate. Suggest them not to do that. So that's the only thing I would add, add into this. Any other motions?
I'll make a motion to accept it with the addition of, there being no back and forth between the speaker and the public.
And I disagree. You really think there should be, if they ask a question, you should be able to answer it.
I will second that motion. Any other discussion? Everyone in all the favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Item five, discuss a second reading of proposed orders, 143, 144. Had I known there was more of an issue with orders 143, I would have asked the police chief here, because he was the one who helped draft this. So, as that is, I would suggest that we bring this to the next meeting with the police chief here to give explanation. I would also accept your input as to, if you could give a copy of those.
No problem.
Okay, that we can actually share that with the attorney? Item, orders 144. Items 144 are definitely designed from the issues we had over the summertime with the red flag warnings. So I think that gives some credence to giving an opportunity for the open burning official to actually enact upon it. I don't think that they're doing anything wrong there. They're looking to make sure that the people following state statutes when they collect the red flag warning. And there's, our fines associates that other towns do this, and their fines are similar to this, where they're doing fine for the burning without a substantial $100. If you'd like, we could bring this back to the third final reading and then do something with this, if that's a fair view. As it was just a second reading. There is no action to be taken. Item number six, discuss an act on setting public information on meeting for the sale of 651 Norwich Road building. And I put in your packet some assessments, condition assessments for both the ECC building and also town hall. So a question was asked at the last meeting about an assessment that was done on both the buildings. They had been done previously. We had a condition assessment study done for the town hall of all the things that need to be fixed, all the things we're working on, and they're prioritizing them. Same thing happened for space utilization and facilities condition assessment of the 651 Norwich Road, the old ECC building. One thing, one thing to add on to that was that there was a additional item that came forth, which was, we don't have any paperwork indicating if there was any lead, asbestos, or mold of the ECC building, so I had the Mr. Gare company go to do that at the building, and they came back with a report on Friday, and at this point, all three of those items are playing. I would say that the same thing was done for the town hall back in 2022, and there was also no findings for mold or air quality issues whatsoever.
That's in 2022.
And also done in 2024, and the same results.
Same results.
So there is no mold downstairs, despite what was listed as...
Despite your concerns of people down there?
Correct. They had a copy of that report.
The people down there had a copy of the report?
Absolutely.
Because there seems to be a lot of concern as to their health.
And again, that's why I immediately went to have Mr. Gare test it. So I'd like to be able to sit down and have a conversation with the public and inform them of the costs, the concerns, the ideas, have a back and forth inter, you know, interaction with them. So I will provide as many copies of this, as costly as it is, as many copies for people to be able to access and review, so we can have it at that meeting. I would also point out that one of the biggest concerns that I had, page... If you look at the facility condition assessment for the 651 Norwich Road, and... Page nine. Again, this is just a precursor, but the idea is that you would like to move into the building that is ready to go. If that is decided to be ready to go, with, we're looking at improvements to the building that cost up to $4,971,000. That does not include the required preventative vaults that would be needed to go in there as well.
This was done in 2023?
Correct. If you remember, the Board of Education had that facility study done so they can assess what would be a proper path for them to relocate buildings, because the enrollment is dropping for 14 years. They hadn't applied for any of the reductions they could have had for student enrollment. So at that time, they decided then to have the study done, figure out what to do with it. And the first step, very first step, was to close the ECC building, which is what they prepared to do and finally turn it over to the town sometime in October. So we can, we can definitely talk about what is...
Well, in the short term, there's only $98,000 in the wanted to... To vote page nine?
No.
Okay, what needs to be fixed in one to two years, $98,000?
Just to explain what I'm concerned about, okay, and take a look at the next column.
Age back, I understand.
No, just take a look, next column, next column, next column. Each and every year, the Board of Selectmen have to vote on adding more money into upgrades. So to move over to that building, those upgrade costs every year would cut into fund balance and over every year, my drop. And right now, we're searching for fund grants that would be applied.
We also have, this building is not in investor shape.
How would you say that?
The fund grant is for a good example.
We're working on that issue as we speak.
I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, neither, neither, both buildings have these issues. I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying, neither, neither bill, both buildings have these issues. I mean.
We have them moving to renovate each of the areas of our building as we speak. Uh, we have H-back in here now, which we never had. We have H-back in the offices upstairs. We're putting H-back into the PNC office areas next year. Hopefully before the end of this winter, we'll have H-back over at the probate office, the HUD office, and the registered voters office. There's a lot of upgrades that have been done over, that we could pull list at that meeting. Operates, this building is not where someone put it, um, sinking ship. Art, do you know that this building was built in 1920?
This old building is very.
That all the building was built in 1913?
It's seven years ago.
And still.
It's seven.
We're not planning to maintain it for quite a while.
For seven, it's, it's a seven year building, so. Number two, we need H-back. We never really take track of, all the schools need H-back. This building, we need.
Peggy brought that point up. Not only do we have to worry about what we're doing, how much money it's going to cost for this, we also have to worry about what impact it's going to have on our, our budget because the school system is looking to do a couple of things. One of the things they're looking to do is add five more classrooms at Shepherd Hill. So eventually they get to the point where they can close down Musso, move over there. As, as a bond is going to go up for that. All the H-back that has to be done in Shepherd Hill, Central School, Memorial School, back when I was on the Board of Education back in 2001, needed to be done for Memorial and Central. They're finally getting to it now, 24 years later.
Well, that's because.
That's a bond.
Yeah, no kidding, but this high, high school bond is coming off.
Okay, you don't think that would be a bond as well?
This would have to be a bond.
Okay, so now we're looking at, again, trying to calculate how much it would cost the taxpayer.
Once one bond comes off, I mean, it's not going to be what the high school cost. The bond for the high school was, is a lot more expensive than this.
If you add all three of those, the bonds we just talked about right now, we're equal to what, and how the bond was for the high school. And there's more renovations that would have to do to this building, obviously, because we had things to do. What would you do with the building? Again, we can talk about other meetings, but if people are saying, let's make this into a right center. Well, senior right center. There's upgrades happening specifically for the seniors.
If you look at the assessment, Peggy.
I did, I read the whole thing.
Okay, for the town hall.
Yep.
What's the estimated cost?
I read the whole thing.
What's the estimated cost? I can say, I can tell you, it's 742,000. Now, 4.9 million is 742,000 dollars to get this place up to.
At 4.9 million, they're talking about.
Everything's fixed.
Over the next 20 years. That 4.9 million is over the next 20 years.
And as I mentioned, if you don't take care of all of it with one shot, what you'll be doing is paying for it every year, asking for more money out of the fund balance. Every year.
Again, a bond. Again.
Again, that's a bond.
It's a bond.
A lot of money.
Mm-hmm, high school is a lot of money. Our schools are a lot of money, these buildings are a lot of money.
And we have to look out for the taxpayer on top of it.
Mm-hmm, I agree with what I was saying.
Anyways, I would like to have a public hearing meeting on it, give that information. If you so desire, I would like to have a public meeting and I would like to have it so it would be on the 23rd of January. And this was to discuss and approve a resolution for a steep grant for authorizing the town to spend an application for the February 20 deadline. Came in last minute, I did ask my staff to help out with this one. If you wouldn't mind, if you can, uh, bring that forward to show at least the projected plans. Steep monies are fantastic, we have two steep grants we have currently. One is for the current work being done on the park, uh, which will hopefully include a bathroom. And if there's money left over, possibly getting some of the, uh, light tub. I think those were the issues we wanted to go on next. Phase two, we're looking to do with steep monies, if possible, uh, was to include, and we'll prioritize them, it would be the, uh, stage, it's up in it, would be up in the back of the, um, area, uh, the back of the track. That would be the first thing on the priority, uh, after that. Uh, we're looking just to finish off whatever lights we might have. I know it's difficult because it's, everyone, if you want to step up and take a look, that's fine. Here's the opportunity that came in Thursday, it was that steep grant application, if we apply for it, we have to go through the town approving it because our charter says, I think it's section 2.5E, uh, that we have to approve anything over $10,000. Steep grant applications for 500 with a 20% match, it used to be 100%, now it's 20. That 20% means that we would have to ask for $100,000 to come out of the fund balance to apply for $500,000 of work to be done. We anticipate that would be engineering costs, that's what we think about the $100,000 may go. Uh, the rest will be for applying it directly towards, uh, updating the Lions Park. So with that, um, there is a diagram here that shows in the back there. If you wouldn't mind just pointing out to where that, uh, stage would be. Uh, so that's what we're anticipating the stage to be. Again, lighting to go and continue around and also, parking, parking is kind of a large issue when we have an event here. We're having a problem with parking occasionally, especially the larger events. Uh, people parking down the roadway. The anticipation is we'll put everything in front of PNC so they get their approval, but the idea is with a steep grant, we could do that. This road that's behind, beside us here is reservoir, reservoir extensions behind us. We would close off those areas to make additional parking around the town hall area. So that is the 50 cent tour, uh, request to go to a public meeting and a, um, sorry, a, a town meeting to approve this. Because we are actually requesting money to come out of the fund balance, the way that the town charter reads is that we have to go through the board finance because we're asking for money to come out of the fund balance for that. That's the $100,000. If approved at that point, we are still applying, uh, for the grant. If that's okay with everybody on that day, you'll apply for the grant and have it ready to go, so it'd be in before the February 20 deadline. So for those people who don't know, we still, we have a couple of people that, if you haven't met them yet. Uh, Ryan Gray, who is our town planner, because they're standing by the board waiting for questions. Uh, we have our grant writer, Shannon Hagan, who's right here. And our new engineer, town engineer, Sean Spaw. So if you have any questions for them, this might be the time I would allow them to, to occur because obviously this is brand new, this came up.
Why do we need a stage?
Why do we need a stage?
Yeah.
Have you, have you been to any of the concerts here? Yep, okay. We'd like to be able to enhance those concerts. The concert we have right now is everybody sits on a lawn chair and look right eye level to the, the people of the band. So we're looking to, uh, once you do that, you will also have that, uh, stage for other things that you do throughout the, uh, year. Whether you're using it for celebrate playing field day, whether you're using it for, um, when we have the Christmas event, uh, we can do that, we can have it for other events as well. Staging area is sets a stage for you to actually get up and be able to help out to, um, facilitate an event. So it is much, much better than what you have right now.
So the concept would be, we have a stage down on the southern end, which would be down at the, the far end of the track. And we have all the lawn area up here where people could, um, put, place some chairs and, you know, like some grass. So it's just a little better area than, than having everybody up here by the building. Is that what it was over the, the other end? Yes, the building is up here closer to the town hall and people would sit out here where the basketball court would just be. This would just be, uh, a raised platform, a raised roof platform, keep them out of the weather. Just a little nicer experience.
Electric, so they could actually have things plugged in and utilize it for, for bands. Sir, one question?
Yeah, uh, so you guys do events out on the lawn, right?
Right now.
Right now. How much are you making off of it? Where are the funds going to? Do you intend to get increase in, in money from having?
We have a rental for the property right now, we would look to increase it for what we eat now. Uh, there are companies that come in that have had in the past food, food truck events, uh, they've had charitable events, so.
Do you receive a significant amount of revenue?
We don't receive a lot of money for what we got right now.
Do you, do you think?
A small increase.
So you think it would be sizable, it would be good enough to, to do this?
Yeah, if it's a covered, if it's a covered stage, we can actually have it so that the bands can go in there and be sheltered and have everything electric, it would be covered as well, so. A small increase.
Do you think it would be worthwhile to have more traffic down here and to have more events down here?
Yeah, especially if you add in the fact that we have lights that are going around there, um, we'd have more events, obviously, in the, the dusk. Much safer.
Well, where does the extra revenue go? Or where would you plan on putting it?
Revenue goes into the town's fund balance. Comes through recreation. Recreation will be the one organizing and scheduling. Heather?
So $100,000 is not a small amount of money. If you're planning on selling the cell tower and ECE building, why aren't we taking that money and putting it into Lions Park instead of putting, replacing all the money that's been taken out of the fund balance in the last four years?
All the money that's been taken out of the fund, can you give me an example?
I, I don't have the number, but I, I was always asking, uh, if anyone's doing it on hand, I, I know it has gone down, I'm sure you probably.
Our fund balance, when the last audit came through, you heard what the number was then?
You're going to tell me?
Sure, because at the audit meeting, at the annual town audit meeting, it was, it said 23.64%.
Okay.
Which is very healthy.
I'm sitting at 20 right now.
All right, so you get 20, it's 10.4 millions right now.
That's not much.
My concern with that is that we're selling the cell tower, we want to sell the ECC. But yet we want to spend $100,000 for the park.
A small amount of money to put into a park to get $500,000 to do all of that.
Again, if you can't afford it, you can't afford it. If you have other obligations that are more important.
So, you hear, you can't afford it, you can't afford it, but you want to keep ECC building and then expend a lot of money for that?
The ECC building, right, the, the town hall has outlived the space that our, our, our department's seeking. We heard that from Becky Hewitt, who was here last time. The town hall people have said they don't have enough room to store their storage. They don't have enough room to put their stuff. Okay, so looking forward to the ECC, there would be enough room in that for years to come. In this town hall, which was, well, built in 1920, as it said, okay? We've outlived our ability to, for us to be here. We need more room. Am I wrong or am I right?
You're wrong.
You're wrong, you don't agree with the wrong town, please.
No, I do not. At the public meeting, I'll explain the, the space that we have here. I think at this time, we don't want to go back and forth with everybody, but if the board of selectmen have questions for our, our, because this could be, again, we're going to go to a public hearing, hopefully, and talk about all of it. But do you have any other concerns, Peggy, or Art, or questions?
Pretty simple, we have to spend $1,000 to get $600,000 in loans.
Yes, the total project cost starts to be $600,000, so we get $500,000, $300,000. The big reason for our existing stage is kind of because of the planning events, they go over the park. The reason they have those events is because of the town, the nice tourism, so it's really the goal, the Sapporo investment coming. They get some of the town, they want to do that. Uh, and then we also have the parking, which is during this. Project A, those are two main things that we focus on, ask that we're able to lighting. The parking is also great just for town meetings. It's connected as part of the parking, right?
Parking is, is the key here. If you want to do anything more in the park, like a dance team or potentially a splash pad in the future, uh, we need more parking. We currently are out of space when we have large events. And this is the structural plan that I came up with a while back, um, showing our town engineer, or we put it on the board tonight. Um, so this kind of gets you an idea of what we would like to do. So this is just a concept, this is not finalized, there's still more engineering work to be done, this is just showing you what our idea was. We could probably get an extra 50 or so spaces for this.
Another 50 spaces?
About 50 spaces.
What they can like, yeah.
Maybe some more, there's, there's a lot of wasted space right now.
So the board of selectmen, okay, sorry, excuse me. Excuse me, I already asked if we wouldn't do that back and forth, just as for the selectmen, if they have any other questions for our staff.
And not to address it to, to these guys, okay, more to you. I, I just hope that you prioritize the lights going around. Because we, we're no good without lights. The park's open until 10 o'clock at night. We need the lights.
The light will be, right, I said, with current funding?
Oh, good, good.
Yeah, our goal is three factories for our next scheduled payment, and we're not paying for, for funding for this year. Um, and then we have leftover funds we'll use up for lighting.
If not, this would be, would be a problem.
And cameras as well.
This.
I would like to put cameras up there as well because it makes it much safer.
If this has to go into the second page, second page, the lights.
Yeah, so we're going to try to prevent lighting from current funding, we need additional funds out of the way.
All right. So we're looking for a motion to approve the request from the board of selectmen to go to the board finance for appropriation of fund balance of $100,000 to be used for financial match to any state and federal program. And then if that's approved, to go to a town referendum. Okay, we set the date, which would probably be the same as the other one, which would be, if approved by the board finance, would be also January 30th.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Any other discussion? Are there any on the paper, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Opposed.
Uh, there is no other item on the agenda, I would entertain a motion at this time to adjourn, so. On the paper, say aye.
Aye.
Now, eight o'clock.